The Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughing) My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order, please. Here we have the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Fennessy.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Missolia.
Here.
Finland.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Dahlbeck.
Here.
And Cadot.
Here.
Thank you. Before we move to the next item, I'd like to ask Counselor McKenzie to come forward.
It's really great when one of these feel-good stories comes along, and this certainly is one of them. This is Morgan Moeen, and really, the whole thing started when I got an email from Dr. Sellers, who lives by the boat dock. He alerted me to the possible presence of an invasive species called Japanese knotweed, and it was at the 21st Street boat landing in Billings Park. Because I know that I know nothing about Japanese knotweed, I immediately called Mary Morgan.
Oh.
And (laughing) because I knew that she would, she'd know what to do. And she got ahold of Morgan, and I wonder if you could, could you tell a little bit how you connected, connected with him and how you got together and how he was wondering about what projects were going on for the city?
Sure, Counselor. Our young man this evening, a representative of his family called me, and it was his mom, and she wondered if I could think of any projects that would be engaging for Morgan to work toward earning his Eagle Scout designation. And it just coincided with Counselor McKenzie's call about the Japanese knotweed. And so with the help of Darian McNamara, one of our staff persons who is really well-versed on invasive species, Morgan sat down with us, and we formed a plan to eradicate this portion of that invasive species. And maybe now Morgan could even tell a little bit about how he organized the eradication.
Right. Yeah. So first, we, of course, called Mary Morgan and talked about what we needed to do to get rid of it, how to cut it, what to do with it afterwards. Then, really, the hard part was getting everyone together and keeping everyone working on, you know, getting all the utilities and cutting it down, bringing it to the brush dump in Billings Park, and then covering the hillside in plastic.
Yeah, he did, he did a fantastic job, and I checked your work, by the way. And (laughing) he did a fa-
Say, Counselor McKenzie or Morgan, can you name the invasive species again?
It is called Japanese knotweed.
Knotweed, okay.
And it is something that I had never heard of, and this, this stuff grows this, this tall. And it almost looks like, like a bamboo type of a plant, and I guess it does, can do a lot of, a lot of terrible things to the, to the environment. And again, they did a fantastic, or you did a fantastic job of coordinating and having all these people go over there. I mean, 4,000 square feet of this stuff, covered it all up with rocks, and then you even worked with city crews, is that right? Did you have city crews haul some stuff away? No?
No, we hauled it just to the brush dump.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, and then, then you did it all, so. And then one other, one other little note I was going to say, if, if you were, if you were Mary Morgan's son, you'd be Morgan Morgan.
(laughing) I gotta jump in here. Morgan's sister asked me, why do you have your first name, your last name as a first name and your first name as a last name?
But anyways, you did, you did a really fantastic job. I'm really proud of you for, for being not only a good citizen, but also for the scout that, that you are. And I think that you've really set the standard really high for becoming an Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
And so I've got this pro, or this certificate for you that I'd like to read. Says, "A certificate of commendation presented to Morgan Moeen for your leadership in coordinating and conducting a Japanese knotweed eradication project at the Billings Park boat launch. Japanese knotweed, listed by the World Conservation Union, is one of the world's worst invasive species, spreading quickly and choking out native species. You led Boy Scout Two, 202."
Two thirteen.
Two thirteen? Somebody made a mistake. Who did that?
That was me.
Okay.
Apologies.
Scout Two, Two thirteen, in a, in a one day, and you can change this, by the way.
Will change it.
In a, in a one-day project to cut and cover 4,000 square feet of Japanese knotweed in an effort to permanently stifle it. You will earn your Eagle Scout designation because of your leadership in organizing this, this project and, and the resulting environmental and public benefit to the citizens of Superior. Congratulations on a great job dated third, dated this third day of December 2013, signed by Mayor Bruce Hagan. Congratulations. (applause) Do you want to give your parents?
We're Morgan's mom and dad and brother Mason.
Thank you, Morgan. You're a fine young man. Next, I've been informed that Counselor, Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the scouting program, of course, is, you know, with tens of thousands of boys, it's a very small percentage that do get their Eagle Scout, and they do show a lot of leadership in that, in that program. And what they have to do is not only do a project, but they have to documentate everything that they do, from the number of phone calls that they make to the number of people they have helping them, and exactly what they do throughout, throughout their project. So I just want to say thank you for doing that, and they do a great service to the communities. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll call for approval of the minutes or consideration of the minutes, for approval, I should say.
Second.
For the motion at second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I've been informed that the council would like to pull business by the public 12.1 to the next portion of the schedule.
Yes, please.
Can you make that a motion?
Okay, I will make such a motion to move 12.1 to the beginning of the agenda and allow Victoria Main to speak at the beginning, and I will also request that we waive the three-minute rule.
Second.
Since, since because of all of her paperwork, I'm sure it's going to be longer than three minutes.
For the motion at second, all encompassing, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Victoria?
Just want to turn the mic on, Victoria.
Hi, everyone. I'm Victoria Main, like Warren said. I'm the director of a new company in town called Twin Ports Stage. And I've, I've, you've been given some handouts here, which I'd like you to kind of take a peek at as I'm talking a little bit. I'm going to be as brief as possible. I know you've got other items to get to, so. But I'd like you to start with the, the pretty pictures there, and I kind of browse through those as I'm talking. These are plans for what is currently the Dunbar Building in downtown, and that's the one that we have our eye on. We're working with an architect out of Milwaukee who has assured us that the building is pretty well-suited to the purposes that we intend. So while I'm talking, I'd like you to just kind of page through that. I want to give you just a real quick background on the company. The bulleted sheet that you've got there with the Twin Ports Stage logo, we started the company because, kind of to honor John Moncel, who was a UWS professor for many, many years in the theater department. And so myself and a group of other alumni are kind of the folks behind the effort here. And our full legal name is the John D. Moncel Legacy Fund, Twin Ports Stage, and for obvious reasons, we go by Twin Ports Stage. But I want to talk a little bit about our future plans, what we're doing right now. As some of you may know, we do a live radio show at the Belpnap Lounge. I think Terry, I think you've been there, haven't you? And we'll continue to do that. It's an original soap opera, and it's a lot of fun. The very first priority we have is to, of course, get a space. Al Jockis has been great letting us work at the Belpnap, and, but eventually, we, we want to do full theater productions, and we'll need a home for that. So the other thing that we want to include in the renovation of the Dunbar Building is a bar café area so that we have opportunities to do all different kinds of events there. We're very much thinking of it as a multi-use community kind of facility. We can do a full season of plays. We'd like to start with a season of three shows, and then also provide a venue for other regional companies to come and do shows here, folks that are in the area. There's folks in Hayward, the folks down in Washburn at Stage North. So we've been reaching out to all those people to find out if they're interested, and they're very much interested in using a space here. So in addition to all of that, we'd like to do music and art and films and classes for young folks, private community events. We'd like to do some performance in the parks, which I'm sure requires some coordination with the powers that be, but we have beautiful parks here, and we'd really like to do shows in them. And at some point, we'd like to work out some kind of relationship with the university, particularly UWS, to begin with, for obvious reasons, to, to work with them on different projects and get students involved. To, to make all that happen, of course, we're fully absorbed right now with fundraising, and we have kind of a several-part plan there that you can see on the list. We're kind of reaching out to UWS alumni and our, our friends, kind of friends of the department. We're reaching out to them personally. And also, we'll be talking to folks locally about sponsorships. Local businesses can do that. Al is our first sponsor at the Belpnap, so that was really nice. We're also working on putting together a video for a crowdfunding site called fundraiser.com. And that, of course, is, is a national platform, or a global platform, I guess, where anyone who looks at your project can donate to it, and we're, we're working on that right now. We hope to have that ready to go within two weeks to 30 days, we're shooting for. So, and of course, we'll be having a couple of fundraising events going forward in 2014, and we're also hoping that there's some support to be had on the city and county level, whatever form that may take. So you can see there on your little sheet that I've also included some, some money about what kind of money we're trying to raise at this moment, and our proposed budget for the Dunbar Building is $800,000 to purchase it, renovate it, and cover first-year operations. We do propose, as you can see, we'll be needing some staff, and theater is one of those businesses that requires a lot of goods and services to make it work. So I put together a real quick list. This is a very small portion of what kinds of things we require to do the work that we do. But we are confident that it would be a really great thing for downtown, to get people there and keep them there to hang out and spend money. So the other sheet you've got here has some, every year, they do a report called the Arts and Economic Prosperity Report. This is the fourth one, the data that's on this sheet, but, and I won't go through all of it with you, but I did want to draw your attention to just a couple of things. You can take a look at the economic impact overall of, of the arts, because we spend a lot of money, because we have to. Not only do arts organizations spend a lot of money, but our audiences spend about triple what we spend. So it's a good thing. But I did want to point out to you, the part towards the bottom of the sheet there where they talk about the average arts attendee spending 2460 per event, that's, you know, in addition to the price of their admission. So that's what they're spending other places before they get to the theater. And there's a lot of other really interesting information in here about the economic impact of the arts. So please review that at your leisure. I won't take up a whole lot of your time with it. I did, if anybody has any questions, this might be a good time.
So Vicki, I have, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Now, looking at the stage area, are those going to be permanent risers?
No.
Okay.
The idea is to, we have tasked the architect with creating an extremely flexible space because we want it to be usable for a variety of theater needs as well as all kinds of other events. So he's got a challenge, there's no doubt. He is a remarkable architect. As you can see, his name is Scott Georgson. He's out of Milwaukee. He's worked on some of the most well-known theaters in the country, the Grand Ole Opry, the Belcourt Theater in, I forget what state it's in, but it's down south. It's a famous old theater. I mean, he's got a really remarkable portfolio, so we're really confident that this guy can figure out what we need in this space.
One idea is to use what they currently do in gymnasiums, where everything backs up to the wall so you would have that whole space, and then you just pull them down as they're needed.
That's, you know, there's, there's a lot of possibilities that, that he's aware of that, that I'm not. I've seen his portfolio of work, and it's quite astounding.
Okay, the other one is, can you get me information on this in, in the form of a proposal? Because UWS Alumni Board meets on Friday, and both Tom Fennessy and I are members of the UW, UWS Alumni Board, and since Tom is chair, he could call on me to make a pitch for it.
Oh, that would be keen. Thanks, Warren. That would be great.
Okay, so you have my email?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, if, if not, it's on, it's on the city's website. But if you could please send that to me, I'll make sure enough copies get printed out and that it gets distributed, and if the foundation is meeting that day too, I could make sure that they get copies.
You, do you want just the little one pager there with our logo on it? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
And, you know, maybe the logo, also the architect's concept of what the Dunbar's building would probably look like.
Okay.
And what you're requesting.
Did you, did you need that in a PowerPoint, Warren?
Please. And if you could send it to Al.
I'll get it to you.
Okay, I won't say anything that starts with smart and ends with a different word.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Thank you. Very good presentation.
You're welcome, Warren. I don't know, this fellow up here looks like he has a question.
Counselor McKenzie.
Thanks, thanks. Vicki, you, right?
Sure.
Vicki, how big of an audience can you accommodate for each play, or can, does it, will it vary, or what would be the maximum?
I've asked the architect to, our goal is to get 250 people. After seeing the space, he was fairly comfortable saying that we could, he felt like we could get between 2 and 250 in there. So that's a, that's a really great size for a lot of different kinds of events, and it's, it's intimate enough, and yet it's a, it's a good enough size so that, you know, we can, we can generate the revenue that we need to operate, so.
So it kind of sounds like it's maybe about the same size as the playground over Duluth?
Absolutely. The new, the new playground space, the underground at the Duluth Playhouse?
No, there's one on Superior Street.
Right, that, that used to be the playground.
Okay.
They're in a new space now beneath the depot. And actually, if any of you have been in that space, that's actually a very similar space to the one that we're working with, because essentially, essentially, the Dunbar Building as it exists is kind of two, two 50-foot squares put together. So it's a 100-foot by 50-foot room. So the way, and if you look at the drawings, you'll see that it's kind of divided, you know, there's the theater and then the bar café part, and those are both vaguely 50, 50 feet by 50 feet, so.
Sure.
So it's, it's a little bit larger than the old underground space that you're thinking of. I did a couple of shows there, so I'm familiar with the space. But if you've been to Renegade Theater in Duluth, for instance, and that's kind of a wacky little layout they have there, but that seat, when they've got it absolutely stuffed to the gills, seats 120. So we'd like to get about double that, if we, if we can.
Yeah, well, the 250 is, is really nice. I, when I first heard about the playground, and I thought, well, that's not going to be, you know, a lot of people for, for these actors and all the work that they go through. But my son is an actor, and he's been, he's been in plays there, and I, I thought it was perfect. I think the crowd reaction and the intimate setting that they have. So if you have that, if you could duplicate that, that's going to be wonderful here in Superior.
Yeah, it's a very good space for actors, and it's, and it's also, like I say, you know, we, we're very conscious of wanting this to be a community space that people can use for a variety of purposes, that, you know, we, we don't have a space right now in town that is not affiliated with a school. So we, we don't have a performing space that's kind of a rental venue for out-of-town people, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So this, it just gives people options that we don't currently have.
Yeah, the only other space, I think Douglas County Historical Society has their stage, and we're, it's really limited, other than, like you said, schools from there, so.
Right, and then, you know, and, and of course, schools, you know, have very busy schedules, and as does the Historical Society, so there's not just an availability issue, but-
That's right.
A facilities issue, so.
Thank you, Vicki.
You bet. Thank you all very much. Thanks for inviting me.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, are you eligible to be a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, in fact, we've, we've already applied, as luck would have it. Shortly after we sent in our application, the government shut down there for a little while.
Sure.
So that, that slowed us down a little bit. I did talk to the IRS the other day, and they, they've now put us in the, we're in the active file now, so we should get a ruling here in the next 90 days, and I, I don't anticipate any problems with our 501(c)(3), because we're not political in any way or anything that could screw us up that way, so.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
You bet. Thank you.
Counselor Dahlbeck?
I just have one question. I see you have, is this drawing here two stories?
Uh, no, actually. The building, the building does have two, it does have a second story, but if you look at that, let's see, page, page three of your drawing, that kind of shows, like, as if you sliced the building in half and we're looking at it, you can see that there's a, there's a second story on the building, but it's really only on the, on the back half of the building, which for our purposes is just fine, because that, that space on the second floor will be a green room and dressing room area and a scene shop area for us. But the good news is the fact that it's only half of a second floor, the support beam that's currently on the main floor, which we will have to remove, of course, it makes it much easier from the architect's perspective to support that room, since there's not actually a second floor above that portion of the building. That will be our playing space, so.
Well, that answers my question, because I thought it was two stories, and I was wondering if it was handicapped or sizable.
It is handicapped, although, well, let me put it this way. It has, it has a front and a rear entrance on the main floor. I suspect that those entrances will need to be widened. I, I don't believe they're handicapped with, so, but, but they're there, so.
Well, thank you, and good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Main? If not, thank you so much for coming before us.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Counsel.
I'll ask for consideration of the consent agenda.
Who's approved the consent agenda?
An motion at second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I'm sorry.
I've got some, I told Terry I got something that I had wanted to be pulled on the consent agenda. I think, Warren, did you do?
Well, I'm not making sense.
Oh, okay.
This is one further out of their business by the way.
It was, Counselor McKenzie wanted item 6.10-4 to be pulled. I thought you were going to make that motion. I'm sorry. That's why I didn't jump in.
Sorry.
If it pleases the council, Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I think there's one person here that wants to speak. I probably have a comment, but he probably would like to speak first and express his concern about these ordinances that are going to be coming up later on in the agenda. Oh, he's here.
Would you turn the mic?
John, you got to turn your mic on.
Well, beginner. Well, my name is John Owen. I live at 17th Center, well, that's my building. I, I've been working with the Public Works Committee for, I don't know, it's been a couple of months or more and some bunch of meetings in, in here, and we finally came to a agreement on what would work down there. But I find that the agenda for the night is missing two paragraphs on both what was approved by the council. If you read, well, let's see, this is the, this is the Tuesday meeting, November 5th. Let's see, oh, this is Common Council, the one I... Wait a minute, no. I get, I didn't get this till six o'clock last night, so I'm really confused. Okay, the agenda for tonight is missing on section 11.6, oh, wait a minute, no, in this one, it's, let's see, I have to relate from one to the other here. From, it's 11.3 tonight, and the, the minutes of the, of the Public Works meeting, it was on November 5th. And at that time, it was all agreed to, and everything straightened out with everybody, and it was much discussion on both, all the meetings about this, and it finally came out where nobody won, but it, it made it possible for everybody to have what they needed. And if you look at 11.6 of the last council meeting, it says, let's see, this is the council, right? Uh, yeah. Wait a minute, no. I am totally confused on this. On your, on your meeting for tonight, if you look at 11.6, it says here, ordinance amended city code chapter so-and-so, parking time section, one two-hour parking only between the hours of 7:00 and 7:00, by adding Winter Street North Side only is left out. That's what the minutes of the official meeting are, from Tower to Ogden. The, by adding Winter Street North Side only from Tower to Ogden. And the same thing happened on 11.7, the ordinance, city code chapter 112 traffic code so-and-so, no night parking, no night parking between 3:00 and 6:00, by adding Winter Street North Side only. I will accept this, and we worked so hard to get this together. I mean, I'm, I'm thanking the, the Public Works, because they, we've been round and round over this thing, and it finally, everybody involved, from the people that brought up the change, everybody's been involved in this that has anything to do with it. And it came out by adding the section that is in the minutes. I, I can make it work, and everybody else can too. That was decided at that meeting.
So John?
So I ask at this time that the, the thing be corrected to what the meeting actually says.
John, can I ask for a clarification, please?
Yeah.
Okay, now, you said at the last Public Works meeting, correct?
Okay, hold on a minute. That's, okay, agenda for the Common Council meeting, Tuesday, November 5th. Oh, wait, that's today. Oh, wait a minute.
No, we're December 3rd today.
Right, right. But this is, why does it say Common Council meeting?
Well, Common Council and City Council are really the same thing.
Okay, but the one, the one for tonight does not have that wording in it.
You mean, it does not have the wording that says North Side only?
Right, on both those sections.
On, on both of those sections.
Yeah.
Okay, on the two-hour parking and also on the no parking from 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Right, that was on the North Side only.
Okay.
If that's what's in it, that's what everybody was-
And however-
That's why we worked so hard to get it together.
However, you're saying, am, looking at-
That's what I want.
Looking at the agenda, or are you looking at the minutes from 11.5?
Uh, okay. I am looking at, I don't know, this is rather confusing for a newbie. Public Works Committee proceeding-
Mayor, can I maybe straighten this up for him?
Sure.
I think what you're looking at, I'm sorry, sorry, Warren, maybe I can straighten this up. That's okay. I think, I think I know where this went. What you're looking at there, November 5th, that's from the council meeting. What happened at that council meeting, refer back to the Public Works Committee meeting of November 20th. So, at that time, what you're referring to is that that time, that was a decision that came up at that meeting. But, what happened at that meeting on November 5th, it was referred to back to Public Works Committee, and so that's where we discussed it.
Okay, I wasn't notified that that was going to happen at that time, so I wasn't here.
Well, you were at, yeah, you were at the November 20th.
But, I was at the last, I came to the last one, but I didn't speak. Things got out of whack and I left.
No, but you were at the last, the committee meeting on November 20th.
Yeah.
And that's where we discussed this.
Uh, October, let's see, I, I don't, I don't have the minutes of that meeting, I guess. I've asked several times to be sent, and I've only gotten one letter from, from the City Hall about, I mean, what's going on down there, and I've asked to have it put in the record. I guess it's in there now that I want to be notified of any of the, you know, anything to do with the street down there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because there's only, there's only six people involved in that whole block, and four of them didn't want anything changed in the first place. And, it was working fine. I didn't, I believe that the police department didn't have a problem with it, and I don't think City Works did either, because we worked to make it work. If it needed plowing, we'd move, you know, we'd go to the other side and try to, try to make it work, because we want to be plowed out. I mean, we've worked really hard on getting this, and I think that, I think the wording on this one, if you'd add that back to, into that, it would work. Nobody got all they wanted. But, by, with this other section here, you're putting me in such harm's way. I have to park a block away down there where there's not even a house to watch my vehicle. And, I have to walk a block and, you know, way down from Winter down there someplace to, I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a second, I was just gonna ask, Jeff, do you know if he received a copy of the last, of our last meeting on the 20th of November? If that, if he was mailed a copy?
From the Public Works Committee?
Yeah, because I know he requested it.
I, I guess I can't say for certain. I would assume so, because he did request it.
Sure, sure.
He was on the agenda to be present at the meeting. He was invited to the meeting, so.
Okay.
I would've thought, yeah. But, but what happened, I mean, is, is the agenda, John, that you're reading from is November 5th, and there was, the council considered the first set of ordinance changes for the parking in that area, and then, rather than pass, rather than adopt those changes, they referred it back, as Counsel Harek said, to the Public Works Committee on the November 20th meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, we discussed it at length there.
Right, right.
And, the committee came up with a different set of ordinance changes, which is what you see in tonight's agenda.
Oh.
So, so there is a different wording, because they've suggested a different set of ordinance changes.
Well, this has all kind of been a surprise on me. Like I said, I didn't get this till last night. I don't know, the mail's kind of slow these days, or, but anyway, I would really like to have it like we discussed it. It doesn't really, I mean, we worked hard to get this together, and, and why it got left out, I don't know. I've been trying to go online and look and see what the discussion was on leaving this out, but I haven't found it yet, because, like I said, I didn't know about it till last night. I was all in favor of what was going on until last night. I called up the Public Works people and, and a couple of counselors and thanked them very much for helping us work this out so it'd work for everybody. And then, I come and I, and then I get this thing last night. I didn't get home till six o'clock.
Mr. Owen, I've got to, I've got to interrupt you, sir.
Sure.
Unfortunately, I'm tasked with some degree of timekeeping here, and I allowed some, I allowed a margin of error there, because I know you got lost with your materials.
Thank you very much.
But, you've had the floor for about-
Well, I get so mixed up in this stuff, you know, because of meeting after meeting, and I've been so stressed out over it, because it's-
But, Mr. Owen, these, these folks have to make a decision. It can only go one of a few ways. They're going to approve the ordinance as presented tonight.
Okay.
They're going to vote it down, or they're going to refer it. So, I think we just have to-
Okay.
-trust them to do their part. I think they've all heard your concern.
I would very much like them to vote it down, and then just add that language back in and pass it next time.
Counsel.
Because that, that's what we worked so hard on.
I'll make a motion to refer this back to Public Works Committee.
It took a lot of city money, time, right out of these people here to do that, you know?
Counsel Mackenzie.
Thank you very much.
Dice for like a second. Counsel Mackenzie.
Oh, well, thank you. And, thanks, Frog, for giving him that, that extra time. I think he didn't, he didn't quite understand that, so, thanks for giving him that extra time.
Thank you very much.
And I, I think that his, and I know this is kind of getting kind of convoluted here, but I think the biggest issue, I think, of all these changes, I, I believe that the bid opposed this, these changes, because I, I think they did do a poll, and four out of six businesses didn't want, didn't want, want those changes. But, when I see, you know, getting rid of calendar parking and then putting the, the three-hour no parking, which allows for cleanup of snow, I, I think that works, you know, maybe not 100% for John, but I think the biggest issue is the, is the two-hour parking. And, and so I think that's probably what the, the bid had a, had an issue with too, was having two-hour, having two-hour parking every day on, on Winter Street. And, I guess, I guess that's, I think if, if that part of it was changed, I think, I think John would be happy, and I think one or two other people, or maybe, maybe those businesses.
Yeah, well, the other one, the other-
I'd like to call point of order here. We had a motion on the floor, and there was no second, so.
There was no second.
If there is no second, we shouldn't be in discussion.
Counsel Finsland.
I think we should call the question on item 6.10, number four, and move for approval.
Second.
Heard a motion at second on 6.10. The motion is for approval with a second. Counsel Mackenzie?
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Say, Mayor, may I make a correction to what John had to say? Mail is, the mail is not slow. My wife works for the post office, and, however, thanks to our congressman, they have decided to change delivery standards, so that what used to arrive in one day is now two or three days.
Oh, okay.
So, and, if you're unhappy with that, then you should contact your, your congressperson.
I was shocked by it.
Right, are we gonna ready and move on?
I can hardly understand it, that's why I do, you don't understand.
I'll, I'll ask for the-
Thank you.
Could that vote be recorded, folks?
It is recorded.
It is recorded.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, number, item seven is business by department heads. Finance Director Vito is approving the following budgets for 2014. We can take these as one item, if you'd like. The liability insurance budget, information services budget, health insurance budget, landfill budget, and economic development fund budget.
Motion approved.
Second.
Heard a motion at second approved, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item number 7.6, Finance Director Vito is requesting approval of the Superior Water, Light, and Power data license agreement.
Motion approved. Is there a second? Heard a motion at second. All in favor, Counsel Sweeney.
Just one question. What is this whole change going to do to our, the amount of money we receive, our bad debts, or is it going to affect our cash? What's, this change, any idea of what's going to happen there?
Well, that's a really interesting question, Counsel Sweeney. The current method of collection by Superior Water, Light, and Power, I'm sure everybody's familiar, that when they receive money, it goes towards their utilities first, and the sewer portion, whatever remains, would go to the sewer bill if, if a customer hasn't paid in full. So, what could happen with that, and what did happen with that, is that at the end of each year, we could see some pretty high delinquent sewage accounts. I would estimate upwards of 15% or 20% of the balance of sewage. Last time I checked, that was probably 575, or maybe even close to $600,000 at the end of any given year. Of course, that goes on the homeowners, it goes on the tax roll, and then is collected when they pay their real estate taxes. So, I think, I hope, that by us having this, doing this in-house, sending out our own bills, hopefully, those delinquencies will be less, but I couldn't guarantee that.
Thank you. I, I didn't realize it was that high, that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.7, Public Works Director Jeff Gussman has recommended to extend the recycling service contract with Hartel's and DBJ disposal for another five years, beginning January 1, 2014.
Heard a motion at second, discussion. Counsel Bender.
Yes, actually, first of all, I wanted to just say a couple of things about Hartel's. For the past almost five years, they've done a very good job. They've, even when I set extra recycling on top of my recycling cart, they've taken that. And, I also need to compliment them, them as being a very good employer for hiring disabled people to work at their facility in Proctor. I have, I have a question, and Jeff, maybe you can answer this. How many, how many bidders were there for this 2014 contract?
Uh, well, Counsel, at this point, the 2014 contract, or the, this is an extension of a contract that's currently in place. It's been in, the contract's been in place since 2009, so we're closing out the fifth year of our contract with Hartel's for recycling. We have the option in our current contract with them to either do an extension or to rebid the service out. And, based on the quality of service we've had and, and the tonnage that has, we've seen increased levels of tonnage come in and reduced from the landfill. I guess, based on that, and heading into a discussion with Hartel's, we decided to try and negotiate an extension, rather than go out for bids on this. And, so what you see here in this extension is a, a starting price that's lower than the, the contract that we're in right now. It's lower for next year, but it's also lower, next year's rate is also lower than the rate we started with in 2009. So, we're going back to a rate that's lower than our five-year ago rate that we started with on curbside recycling, and we think that's really reasonable. And, given the level of service that we've experienced, we're recommending that we extend this contract.
Okay, so Jeff, to answer my question, there were no bidders?
Nope, this is, this is an extension, rather than a bid situation, correct? Yeah.
And, so then I don't need to ask what were the other bids?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, Hartel, DBJ is located in Proctor?
Yep.
Okay. And, Nordic and Waste Management are located in Superior?
Parts of them, yeah.
Okay, so, it's not really a level playing field, then, for them, because they were not given the opportunity to bid?
This, but this isn't a bid situation. Again, we had the opportunity to extend an existing contract, and once we headed down that path and negotiated a new price, it's not, it's no longer a bid situation, unless we couldn't come to terms of an extension.
Now, those of us on the Finance Committee did receive a letter from Waste Management saying they would be okay with a one-year extension.
Sure.
And, in conversations with someone who I know that works for Nordic, they would also be comfortable with a one-year extension, and with the option maybe for another one-year extension after that. But, I can't support a five-year extension at this time, and I'm also going to request a roll call vote.
I can, if I could comment one more thing on the five-year extension, when we, when we started talking about a one-year extension, actually, I think with the longer extension, we've received a better price, as far as, with additional years being considered, you know?
I agree, the price is, is better. However, it wasn't a competitive bid. Nobody else bid. Nobody else gave a price.
Well, they, they did in '09.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And, this, the, the extension provisions in contracts are not uncommon. We have dozens, we probably have dozens of contracts now that, that do have provisions that contemplate extensions. I mean, in a lot of ways, it's good business. You have a company that knows it'll be doing business with us for a period of years, rather than months, and they can make personnel, staffing adjustments, adjustments to their, their fleet, the maintenance and the acquisition of their equipment, based on an account that they know is going to have some life to it. I mean, I'm not saying you can't take this apart and do whatever you want. I'm just saying it is very much a standardized way of doing business, that being the provision that allows extensions of various contracts.
Well, thank you for that, Attorney. Counsel Olson.
I got a little heartburn with this, too. I was at a meeting today, and we have invested a lot of money in a consultant, that one of his main prefaces as to why he's here and how we can revitalize the city of Superior is to invest locally, create jobs, retain jobs, and we're not doing it here. And, as far as extension of contracts, I think it's unfair to go into an extension of a contract if, five years ago, you just didn't happen to be a low bidder. And then, that takes you out of the game, because you've got a provision for an extension of a contract. The other two, let's just say, two competitors, we have no idea what their bid could have been. They paid taxes in the city of Superior. We don't know if they had an opportunity to help, hire people that were people with disabilities. We've taken all the fair play out of it, in my opinion. I understand the extension of contracts. I'd do them in the private world. But, in this instance, we, we have eliminated fair process of bidding. And, if we're looking to invest in our community, and if we're looking at spending a lot of money to have a consultant come here and tell us his ideas, his recommendations, we just threw that out the window, in my mind. And I won't support a five-year thing either.
Counsel Finsland.
Yeah, the reason we didn't open this up for additional bidding is they've already seen this bid. Once you've made your bid public, and everybody knows what your prices are, it's no longer competitive bidding. You can write whatever you want into it. This bid was offered with the idea that they would give, we would offer a five-year contract to them. Anybody else can read somebody else's bid, but once, once they're open, you don't get a chance to rebid after you see your competitor's bid. So, I think it's appropriate that we extend this contract five years, because we're giving a good deal from them. And, the Hartel family is an old Superior family. They've been around for years. These people's father was my custodian at Central, so I know the family well. And, they're not just, because they happen to be located up in Proctor, this is certainly one economic community around here, and I don't think we have to degrade them for being up in Proctor.
Counsel Sweeney.
I think if, if the common council wants to have a process where we go for bids on most things, or all things, then we should put that into the procedure. We haven't done bidding on some things since I've been here, the golf course, other things. And, so, this is a procedure, but if we, I'm a bid guy, too. I like bids, but I realize that you can't have a bid every year, because you just won't get pricing. And, so, this is a process, and, and it's a fair one. And, for this one, I would vote, I'm in favor of it. But, going forward, if we wanted to set a process, then we should set the process and have bids on most things.
One other, one other point I feel compelled to make, is that this matter was before the Finance Committee on November the 14th, and it was approved at that point. And, you actually, you actually approved it in the consent agenda.
Counsel Delbert.
I just have one question. You said we have, for two years, they gave us a good deal. So, the third year, do we know what we're going to get, the third, fourth, and fifth year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got, we've got all the years in the, there's a spreadsheet attached to the item in the agenda. I mean, we're paying 302, we're paying 302 per cart, per month right now, and the first, the first year's price right now will be 280, 295 in 2015, 308 in 2016, 308 in 2017, and 314 in 2018.
Okay, that's all.
I can tell you that the county awarded a bid a few months ago that was 370-something.
Okay.
In a competitive bid situation, so whether that's what we would've got, it's hard to say, but that's, that's an indicator of what recent bids are. So, so this price, right now, for the next two years, is lower than what we were paying in 2009.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. That's all.
And, I, I just wanted to add, I know Hartel's are here tonight, too, if you do have questions and you want, if you guys want, want to address the council, maybe that would be-
Counsel Mackenzie.
Yeah. Regardless of what we do, I think for me, the biggest issue is getting people who are non-compliant, who are non-recent- non-compliant, who are non-recyclers, to recycle. And I know we've worked on this thing for, you know, three years, maybe four years, I don't know. There's a lot of people that are still not recycling. We have to do something about that. I'm not saying that, you know, you're supposed to be, some people refer to it as the recycle police, or whatever you want to call it. But we just have to make people realize that it is, it is easy, that we're spending a lot of money on these, on these projects. And so if, if we give them a container, and they put it in their garage, and I know some people are putting wood in them, or whatever they do, we need to get them educated that they have to use those things, just like they use their black can. Because I never see anybody miss garbage pickup day with the black can. They want that picked up. And it's just, it's easy, it's just as easy, if not easier, to put out that recycled container, whether you're still putting out bins, or if you're putting out those things. So we need to, I know for a short while, I think we were putting out some information, but I think we got lax again. So let's do it, and let's actually get those numbers up. I don't believe some of the numbers that were saying that we were, we had 80% participation, that's baloney, because I checked my, my district quite often, and on those days. And there are so many that are not putting those out. So education and getting the people to recycle, it would be good, no matter what, what program contract we go with.
Counselor Dalbec?
Well, it's my understanding that if you have a garbage bin, you're to have a recycling bin. Is that not true? Okay, I live in a neighborhood where there's eight garbage bins and not one recycling bin. Now, I was told that's because they're a large apartment building. But then why are they, why is the city picking up their garbage, then? I mean, they should have the recycling bins.
Yeah, I mean, that's one we should talk about. Those are the ones we're looking at, though, that have more than they should have for carts, or don't have their service.
You know, we all recycle. And I think it's the duty of the city to see that everybody recycles who's supposed to. So if you can do that, I got my bit.
Counselor Olson?
I do have a question for the Hartels, if they could come up, please, or one of them. Appreciate you coming here. My question is, the, the help that you do hire, is it a service that you pay for?
No, we have three employees that are residents of the city of Superior that are either collectors or work at our recycle center. So two of the collection crew that do the collection are right residents of the city of Superior that were hired once we got this contract. And then we use one in a recycling sorting center, also.
The people that are on the so-called line, you've got half a dozen, maybe more?
Correct.
They're people with disabilities?
We have a variety. We've, we've tried a, a group of, that handles handicap-type challenge workers, and we've used them for a while. But we found that the, the pace of that work didn't really fit them. So we've, we go through, most of the employees are our own employees. We do use attempts service, because there's a fair amount of turnover in that job, so...
So you do pay for, you do pay a service?
We, to help us find workers, correct?
What do your workers get paid?
Recycle center sorters are making, I believe, about 11, 11.50 to $12 an hour, right now, depending on how long they've been there.
And those are the people with handicaps, as well?
No matter who they are, yeah. Anybody that works in there, as far as...
Do they get their own paycheck?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I just, if I could, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. As far as the recycling center, or recycling contract, it's for fourplexes and under, so possibly there are some apartment buildings that are bigger than a four, four-dwelling units. We don't cover them, as far as our contract with the city. So I don't know if that's possibly what's, what you're seeing there. We do offer that service commercially, and so do the other haulers. But our contract with the city is a four, fourplex and under residential dwellings that are provided this service. So I think, hopefully, that'll answer that. Couple other things I'd like to address, just to try to clear up some things. Waste Management was the other company that bid on the county contract that Mr. Getzmann referred, that the price was significantly higher, just a few months ago. So, you know, certainly can't predict what our competitor would do, but their last go around with the county, the rates were quite a bit higher. We feel our number that we've, we've given the city for a five-year contract extension compared to a one-year contract is very aggressive. We lowered our price considerably to try to get this thing out there a little farther, so we could continue to do exactly like that gentleman said, is to, to try to streamline the operation and get better equipment, and try to find better ways to collect it, and also to try to convince the consumers that they need to recycle more. We have doubled the participation and almost doubled the tonnage in the five years that we've had this contract. So I feel like we've done a very good job with that. And I believe that we're worthy of it. We've also done one other thing that isn't mentioned here, but originally, when we were awarded this contract for five years, it was 10,475 homes that we had the right to build the city. We, after two years, we lowered that to 10,106 on our own. We didn't have to. We gave the city a savings of 200 and, or 300 and some homes that, with the help of Chris Bronson in your finance department, we've identified the original list, probably was very inaccurate, or how it came about, I don't know, but it's been the same 10,475 for 20 years that I've been involved in looking at this. So I think we finally got a little better handle on how many number, how many accounts there possibly was. So we felt, in a good faith gesture, we would do that and give the city a reduction during those last three years. And we feel that, you know, that's another thing we've done to try to earn the right to get this extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Just one, one more question. When I was talking about getting people to recycle more, or we're trying to get more people to recycle, is there any way that, that you can keep track of people who are recycling and not recycling? I know that you have different employees, but, you know, I mean, I think you could get, you could get a feel for a pattern of someone who maybe, you know, doesn't put one, you know, you see him, it's never out there, or maybe it's out there once every six months. Is there any way that you can keep a tally of that? And I, I've even suggested that maybe our city crews, you know, when they're picking up garbage cans, because, you know, there's, those things are out at the same day that there's garbage pickup. So is there, is there a chance that you could do that?
Well, we've, we've been in discussion with the Public Works about that. It's a little more challenging than it sounds, because there are, you know, some people that are, that go away for the winter, for example.
Right.
That might not be around. There's some people that, with, with that size cart, don't need it every two weeks, so they might put it out every four, six, eight weeks. So I think we've, we can identify the people that aren't using the service at all.
Right.
But there are a faction of people that use it, but don't use it regularly. So, you know, it's, it's not as clean-cut as, you know, you use it or you don't. There's, there's certainly a faction of people that's in the gray area there.
How hard is it to reach people who never have recycled, or refused to recycle? How hard is it to reach, to reach those people?
Well, from our standpoint, we don't have a database, but, you know, certainly the city, I would suspect, would be able to. Recycling, just a little experience on what we've seen on the other side of the bridge, is, it's an ongoing issue. You're gonna, you're gonna constantly need to educate and encourage and work with your consumer to try to keep them engaged, and to keep them, and get the people on that aren't involved now. A little tougher over here, because, you know, they have access to a lot of garbage service available to them at zero cost, you know, they think. So, but I think we've, you know, we've got a 70% participation rate, which is very, very good for the system you have here. It's, you know, from where we came from, it's going to be harder to pick up that last 30%, for sure. But I think there's some room to, in the next few years, to work at trying to push that into the 80s and get that, you know, extra tonnage out of the waste stream that's going to the landfill now. So, I, you know, that's what we're, we're prepared to do and continue to work with the city, if, if we're the provider.
Sure, thanks.
Boy, did you hit it on the head. I'm sorry. Counsel, Counsel Sweeney?
I just think that for Public Works to award a contract for five years beyond what it is, based upon, we wouldn't award it to a company that's not doing a job for us. But I think they've been exemplary, and so, in my opinion, they would deserve another, especially when the cost is reduced.
If I may, if I may just say a few words here. First of all, your service is excellent.
Thank you.
I don't get a single call, I have had calls, to compliment your service that you provide likewise with the service that Public Works provides for the garbage collection. Never get a call of negativity at all. And the service, when you, when, your people even wave when they leave, and that's, say hi, and so forth. But it's been excellent. And in my opinion, it's not broke, so why fix it? Especially when we're getting a rate that's better than five years ago. So I want to thank you for the service that you've provided the city. Thanks so much. When I, I smiled, and when you said that people think they're getting it for free, that's our problem.
Also, one last thing, I don't mean to beat, beat the horse here, but I think a very important point here is, our company invested in a recycle center in Proctor, Minnesota. All the recycling that's collected in Superior and in Duluth is taken to our center and sorted and sent to markets. Both our competitors, Nordic and Waste Management, put that same recycling in a semi, ship it all the way down to St. Paul, turn around, sort it, and ship it all the way, some of it back up to Cloquet. That's not environmentally friendly. That's why we invested the millions of dollars we have in our sorting system to do it right here. So I think that's something to consider, you know, when you look at what are the competitors doing. We're doing the right thing, and we spent a lot of money to do the right thing.
Thank you. Call the question, I'd like to have a vote.
The motion is to approve the five-year extension by roll call. Counselor McKenzie? Counselor Dalbec?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
No.
Counselor Fennessey?
Yes.
Counselor Bender?
No.
Counselor Sweeney?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Missolia?
Yes.
Counselor Finsland?
Yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Yes.
Vote is seven to three, and passes.
Motion carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending the following committee reappointments to the Business Improvement District, Board of Directors, Alan Jockus, Chris Carey, and Joe Bedard, and to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, Bill Galick.
Motion is second for approval. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 9.1, Counselor Sweeney is requesting an update from Human Resources on the changes that will be occurring on January 1st.
You want me to ask a question, or do you want?
Sure, yeah, go right ahead.
Maybe you could just give us an update where we are, and where, what's going to take place. I know what's going to take place, but are we on target, and what's happening?
Okay.
And then I do have a few questions.
All right. As most of you are probably aware, Act 10, which was passed by Governor Walker's administration in 2011, abolished almost all bargaining rights for public sector employees, other than public safety and transit employees. At the expiration of our two current AFSMI union contracts, which will be December 31st of 2013, these employees will become non-represented employees. The duty to bargain with these groups of employees will be restricted to only base wages, and only if the union successfully recertifies. The, the purpose of Act 10 was to provide municipalities with tools to reduce personnel costs and create efficiencies. And further, the state is forcing the use of these tools with shared revenue reductions and capping the ability for municipalities to tax. What has, what has been referred to as the handbook is what I'm prepared to talk about right now. The document, our document, is called the Non-Union Salary and Benefits Policy. It is something that will encompass the, many of the benefits and information that is currently in the two union contracts. That document is scheduled to be before the Human Resources Committee next Monday, December 9th. And hopefully, upon approval at that meeting, it will be before the council on Tuesday, December 17th, for approval. The, this non-union salary and benefits policy must be approved by the Human Resources Committee and City Council before January 1st of 2014, in order for these employees to retain their current benefits, or the benefits as they're outlined in the non-union salary and benefits policy. Do you have anything specific, anything more?
Actually, Jack, if it's okay with you, can I interrupt? I only have one short question.
Well, go ahead.
My one short question is, didn't the court recently rule on this?
The, there was a, a decision about an appeal and recertifications.
Right.
And the, what was, I'll try to use the right verbiage. My understanding is that the WERC was continuing, was recertifying unions that were not involved in the original lawsuit with Judge Colas. And Judge Colas ordered them to stop. And that was brought before the Supreme Court, and they said that Judge Colas could not make that order. Judge Colas, sorry, the State Supreme Court is still considering the original appeal to them from Judge Colas's decisions. But the recent decision was that the WERC could begin recertifying unions that were not involved in that original lawsuit.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hey, my, my first question is, being that this is a major shift from both, both sides, has there been any training done for managers to, to work with employees, or where are we on that?
Managers receive some initial training, I think it was in 2012. Our civ mic, who does a lot of, our insurance company, who comes and does a lot of our training for our supervisors, had put together a managing in the, the new Act 10 world, kind of some, some general information on how things are going to change without a union contract, to basically define everything that a manager can and can't do. So that's, that's really the only training, outside of just regular managerial and supervisory training we've had, that's been specific to managing in, without the union contract.
Okay, I would think one of the biggest fears of an employee is that management, without any protection now, would take it out on an employee, because he dislikes them. I, I can't say that that would happen, but I, I can, so I would just like to make sure that they're trained well enough to know and go through a process and a procedure to handling whatever they have to handle.
Yeah. You know, we, we do recognize this will be a change for supervisors, also, and that they may need help and training in areas of managing that the union contracts currently define for them. I think that what we'll do is, we'll be identifying areas where we feel training is needed in early 2014.
Okay.
As we begin the new process.
So what, if any, proactive things have we done so far with all employees?
With all employees? If you, are you referring to the current?
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be, you didn't mean each individual employee, one-on-one, but in groups, and through their current leadership? So is it filtered down, so every employee knows where we are, where we stand, what we're doing?
I would like to think most of them have a good idea, but I doubt that. We've reached everyone. I can tell you that, you know, we've discussed the handbook and its contents, and what's changing and not changing at several labor management meetings with both of, each of the AFSMI unions. The mayor and I met regularly with each of the, the union's leadership. Again, an interactive process of discussing the contents of, of the handbook. The unions have been, the, the union leaders, I should say, have been very open in our meetings. There have been honest exchanges of ideas and requests. And I guess I can tell you that the, the union leadership, they seem to be appreciative to be participating in the process. This week, the mayor and I plan to hold a few employee meetings, well, a few meetings at different locations, of employee locations.
Good.
To make ourselves available to current AFSMI employees and supervisors. To make ourselves available to current AFSMI employees and supervisors to answer questions about the proposed, the new proposed non-union salary and benefits policy and how it may or, may impact the way they operate or answer any questions. There was, there's been a lot of rumors where people heard things and thought it was true and, and we've continued to try to reassure them that it is not true.
And my last question would be, any potential problems that you've seen since this has started?
Since it started?
Well, since you started the process. You know it's going to happen as a one-on-one, so, but before that, you knew what was going to happen on one-on-one. Any, through the whole process, do you, do you see any potential problems?
I, hopefully not. You know, one thing that we want to make sure happens, and this is more about Janu-, in January, is we want to make sure that the, there's consistency in the operations and the application of the new policy. We want to keep communication lines open. There's been question about whether we would continue with labor management and that is our intention, is to continue with labor management meetings as a, a, one way of an interactive process because this is a big change for everyone. We know that there's going to be bumps in the road. The, the non-union salary and benefits policy is a living document. It, it can and will be changed as needed as things arise or unintentional consequences come about with language that's there or, or missing. So it's, it's not something that's set in stone that can ever be changed.
Thank you. Thank you.
See, if I could just ask one, one more question. Do, do all the counselors have this document, the rough draft?
I have it with me to give you tonight after the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for answering that. So now we know when we'll have them.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Kami, have the, the locals recertified?
I don't believe they've reached the, the time, I, from what I understand, and that'd be a better question for them, I believe they have till January 31st to recertify, to file for recertification or something like that.
So that option is available to them?
I believe so.
To recertify?
I believe so, yes.
The other, it's kind of complex and I want to make sure I don't get something in a ringer. In, when we're talking about the, the unions and, and, and that they're not going to be recognized anymore, if they're able to recertify, what, how does that go about? If they can recertify by law, how are we taking away their union status?
That is a complicated question.
You're, we're going to be, as a city, because of Act 10, we are going to strip them of their rights, basically. Okay? If they recertify and they're allowed to do so by federal law, state law, or however we want to do this, state, I'm assuming, how are we doing this? We're going to ignore that they're union people and you talk about union leadership. How is the city going to address that? And what if this, none of this passes by January 1st? What's the repercussions?
If the, the non-union salary and benefits policy does not pass?
For, for everything that you, the handbook, everything that you're going to bring forth on the 17th of December?
As I mentioned at the, at a labor management meeting yesterday, it, it would be my belief that they would become non-union employees with the current benefits. They would lose what they have or what is being proposed and become non-union employees with the benefits the current non-union employees have. I would obviously seek a legal opinion on that, however.
Perhaps I can help with that, maybe not. I feel very strongly about all of the people that work for the city of Superior and the dedication that they've provided, the expertise we have, the service deliveries that are second to none. I get around a little bit and talk to as many employees as, as I can and I enjoy doing that. And there, there's been a, a bit of concern out there with regard to, do I even have a job on January 1? Well, my answer to them is whether they go to work on December 27th or January 2nd, it's, it will be, what they will see will be seamless and I'm hoping that's true and I'm, I will, I will fight to make that true. The, I think what Kami, and correct me if I'm wrong, is trying to deliver, is the handbook is necessary for that continuity that we, we've been discussing here tonight. The only issue that, and I, we have a couple people from 240 or 235 and Erica Tinkle Smith is from the AFSMI Northwest. Excuse me for not understanding or remembering. She can maybe address this or so can Lee, so can Lee, but the, I just had a senior moment here. But at any rate, the, what we've been doing is working with them fairly regularly with regard to this whole thing and it's been a, it's been an input, give and take and discussion. I know what I was going to say. The, originally the only concern that we was raised outside of wage rates, if you will, and several categorical classifications was the, the daily bidding. That, I believe, has been, has been a difficult process for supervisors and in some cases for, for the people out there that are expert in various areas of what they perform. But setting that aside, and I think it has been aside, set aside, we've been working very closely with the, with the representation and through their membership feedback with regard to accomplish, how to accomplish this. And Kami has, through a lot of pressure from me, I guess, over the time, has done a wonderful job, great job. She's taken a lot of instructive abuse from me, I think, and I apologize for that, to, to work, to work and get this thing done with the unions. And I too have sat in and out of purpose of interest, of course. And I believe that, and I would like Lee and Erica to correct me if I'm wrong, please do, I believe that the handbook as will be presented is something that is acceptable and it serves the purposes for most everybody. The supervisors aren't really happy with it in some cases because they didn't get everything they wanted. Our, our employees may not be totally happy with it with regard to some things that they may have wanted, but I believe that the entirety of the handbook is pretty much resembling of what the actual contract provides today. I, I, I want to say one other thing, but I've taken considerable time in, in working with Human Resources and on my own in examining, shall I say, how we treat our employees in relationship to other market equal areas. And I'm embarrassed to tell you, and I think many of you do agree, that for one reason or another, over the years, we haven't probably stepped up like we may have, could have, should have, and perhaps in some cases we couldn't with regard to economy and so forth. So I, I, I believe it would be important to separate those two issues and the way we would hope to do it is present the handbook to HRC and the council for review for the next week prior to the meeting, seeking adoption of the handbook so that we can move into the first of the year with assurance for everybody that operations and relationships continue on as, as they have been and hopefully better. Then, what I've been working on most recently and with the help of Kami and, and costing out by finance and so forth and meeting with other folks, is a recommendation that I hold very strongly. And I, you will see that my recommendation is worded to the point that of my conviction that we're looking for raising all ships. By that I mean that you will see some rate changes that will be improving the working relationship for people that are in positions that need to have rate changes upward. You'll see the, the recommended change in salary by percentages. You'll see, and that's phase one, that I call phase one for 2014. You'll see within that phase one, a movement of some administrative staff to suit, I'll be honest, to suit me better. When I say suit me better, I'm talking about the mayor's office. Many of you heard me discuss the fact that I truly believe that we need a city administrator. I'm giving that up. That argument has really gone nowhere. And I got to be negative or Debbie Downer. My job has not been able to be performed to the adequacy that I believe it should be because I can't get out of the office. I'm swamped with day-to-day, day-to-day, day-to-day. And so in that light, I'm going to be seeking, and I will be strongly recommending some changes with regard to facilitating the ongoing, I believe, rise in activity that we have in the community in all aspects, economic development and otherwise, and some adjustments to that nature. Phase two, because you can't accomplish everything overnight, phase two will be a three-year project. And that'll be 15, 15 and 16, I should say, with regard to 17. What we'll be doing is reviewing every single classification that, that we have for accuracy, responsibilities that may have been increased due to all kinds of factors and do proper remuneration for that, no matter what the position may be. And the phase two will also encompass raising all ships with regard to the ability that we can with increases as well as review of classifications so that they're properly assigned and aligned and paid. In a nutshell, the review we have is that in the market, and I'm talking about like cities, like services and cities, we're between 15 and 30% below market. Shocking as it may be, but it's also understandable because there hasn't been a lot of movement in the upward motion for a long time. So, this may sound like a negative, but it's really a good positive. January 1 of 1907, 19, 2017, we're looking to have all employees at no less than 10% behind market, which will cause some very desired and deserved increases for many positions in the city. And I will also be presenting the fact that we can pay for that. So I'm pretty excited about this. I know a lot of people that have worked on this, both with the unions and so forth, are anxious to, to move forward together and work this out. And to answer the Counselor Sweeney, is one of his questions is about how do we move forward so that we're all in, meeting the requirements of training and supervisor and people understanding, well, communication is everything or communication is nothing? And we need to make that a constant level of communication so that everybody has the ability to understand and propose and be a part of the project that may have bumps in it, so that we all get there together in a, in a, in a good form and fashion. So I'm excited about this. I will be working with each counselor as you wish and as I, hopefully, you will allow to discuss this measure with me because I will be looking for your, your undivided support. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your vision. I, I believe that Lee Sandok Baker, who is the president of 235, would like to say a few words to the council.
We, local, I'm the president of Local 235, Lee Sandok Baker. And our concerns as a local, obviously, you know, started two years ago or so. But, you know, in reality, we've, we've been voicing concerns about, about how this handbook, the policy is going to turn out for, well, about the last year. And we have been appreciative and, and we recognize that at this point, we've been having open conversations with Mayor Hagan and with Kami. There, there are still, you know, what it, what is going, what is in the handbook isn't, isn't, you know, 100% and it definitely isn't bad. And we appreciate and recognize the, the good things that, that have come from our discussions. But I do want to be open and honest from Local 235's perspective on the things that, that still remain concerns for us as to what is not included in the handbook. The one thing, and, and Counselor Sweeney touched on, on their, on the process of, of developing the handbook, but also what problems may come up with the implementation of the handbook, with the, with pieces of the handbook, with management training in relation to handling the handbook and, and the rules and policies that are in there without having a, a local, a contract to go by. And one of the things that we feel would help in the implementation in these, especially in these first months as, as the handbook goes into use, is some sort of a grievance procedure, not just the Civil Service Commission grievance procedure that, that is included in the policy that is required. That covers termination, discipline and safety. And that is required and that is included in the policy. What we're looking for is some sort of a procedure where employees can bring their concerns in a formal fashion to, to the administration to be resolved. The grievance procedure that exists in the contracts has, you start out talking to your supervisor, it then goes to the Human Resources Committee and then it goes to the mayor, if I'm correct. Am I, did I get any of those out of, out of order? The mayor and the HRC are flipped, okay. And you'll have to forgive me because I haven't been through very many grievances as the president, which is great. But, and then ultimately it would go to an, an arbitrator for the final binding decision. We don't have that option anymore. And these things would cover any kind of a grievance outside of those, you know, including but also outside of discipline and, and termination and safety. There are ways to include a grievance procedure that doesn't include that binding arbitration. And there, there is language that can be included that includes those, those three steps that we already have and other ways of resolving a grievance. I know that some of the language that I've brought to Kami and the mayor's attention isn't, isn't what they would like to see in there and that we're at a point where we're so close to having to pass this handbook and pass these policies in order to get them to go into effect for 2014, that, that to, you know, hash out a grievance procedure might be almost an impossibility. However, it is something that we see would be a benefit to everyone rather than have these problems fester among employees, not knowing what to do about them and not having them resolved. That was, that's one of our, one of the things that, that we see as, as missing, you know, a glaring hole in what is the handbook. And then secondly, Counselor Olson touched on union leadership. And, and this is just me honestly, you know, how, how do you know who the union leadership are? Who, how do you know who the leaders of the group, a majority group of the employees are if you don't recognize that there is a group? How does that group put forth their leadership to discuss and to participate in the communications with Mayor Hagan in an organized fashion such as Labor Management Committee without identifying that there is a group of employees and that that group has put forth leaders? forth leaders in some way, shape, or form, it's impossible to know that the people that you're speaking with on behalf of the workers are speaking on behalf of the majority of the workers. You know, as Mayor, Mayor Haggen said, with 244, the daily bumping was an issue that, that they've, they've hashed out and has, I guess, gone away. For us, it's not so much daily bumping, it was seniority, that's something that, that we understand, that, that, you know, it, we can't have everything that was in the contract, and we understand that. We're looking at processes, processes and procedures that, that we feel like will be of benefit to management, and the administration as a whole, and to the employees individually, having processes and recognition to keep things organized. So I appreciate letting you, letting me, you know, speak today, and, as I said, I'm just honestly putting out there, as you have this handbook tonight to look over, those are the things that are our concern to us, and it's no secret to Cammy or the mayor that those were our concerns. So, there you have it. So, thank you. Thank you.
I'm ready to move on. Item 10.1 is a resolution of the Plan Commission authorizing a special use permit for outdoor sales at 5002 East Third Street.
Heard the motion, second approved. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
10.1, a resolution of the Plan Commission setting a public hearing January 21st to vacate the East West Alley and a portion of the North South Alley between Banks and Oaks Avenues and North 14th and Bellknap Streets.
Heard the motion, second. Counselor?
Are we going to be changing the January meeting? So, does this?
Not that one. Not that one. We're going, I think right now, it's, we're looking at canceling the first meeting in January, but having the second.
Alright.
On the 21st.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 10.3, a resolution approving the report of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior regarding the development agreement with Erin Dandrea and David Regner.
Heard the motion, the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Item 10.4, a resolution of the City of Superior supporting the approval of Elkhorn Industries' permit application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for rehabilitation of their dock, dock wall in order to facilitate maritime commerce.
What is the pleasure?
Second.
Heard the motion, the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department, amending the traffic code, disabled parking zones by removing 911 Clough.
Heard the motion, the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 11.2, an ordinance amending the traffic code, two-hour parking only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. by adding Winter Street from Tower to Ogden Avenues.
Second.
Heard the motion, the second. Discussion, Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, just, just a point I wanna make, because the concern of the bid was primarily this two-hour parking, and because there, there were businesses that were opposed to this, I'd just like to call for a roll call vote on this.
Is there further discussion? I should, I should put a, a comment in here. Since this issue came up, we've had at least one other business that wants to be excluded within the Central Business District. And one of the reasons I asked to have it referred last time was because I thought it would be a ripple effect. It has caught the attention of other businesses that wanna be excluded, which would create, I think, a real problem, but anyway. Your motion was?
To.
It was just, just for a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Um, motion is to approve item 11.2. Counselor Dahlbeck?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Bender?
No.
Counselor Sweeney?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Missolia?
Yes.
Counselor Finsland?
Yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
No.
Motion passes eight to two.
Motion passed.
Item 11.3, an ordinance amending the traffic code, no night, night parking between 3:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. by adding Winter Street from Tower to Ogden Avenues.
Heard the motion, the second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, motion carried.
11.4, an ordinance amending the traffic code, no parking in designated spaces, commercial loading zones, amending 1711 Winter Avenue for a distance of 35 feet.
Heard the motion, the second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
11.5, an ordinance amending the traffic code, streets excluded from calendar parking by adding Winter Street between Tower and Ogden Avenues.
Heard the motion, the second. Counselor Olson?
I just wanna, um, comment on the, the process that we went through with all of these things. Everybody was more than well-informed on what went on. As far as getting meeting packets in the mail and, and everything else that goes with it, um, these agendas are online, you know, we've all got these little toys here that we can use, but, um, Todd and Jeff did a, a real good job of getting this put back where it needed to be. Uh, the, the thing that a lot of people didn't realize is the consistency of the other part of town. Mark McGillis did a real good job chucking explaining where the police department was on this, and we had all real good cooperation in all of this. The very sad part about this is, we had that meeting on Wednesday, the 20th of November, and, uh, one of the businesses that was lobbying for this was Phil Runzer at Superior Motorcycle, and, uh, he passed away three days after we had this meeting, so, um, he's not gonna see the, the fruits of your labor, per se, but I think everybody did a real good job in those meetings. There were some intense times, but there, there was no, there was no basis for anything to go but this way. We, uh, you know, in approving these first three, and, and hopefully this, this fourth one here, we'd have been doing justice, an injustice, by catering to just some guys that wanted to park their vehicles in front of buildings that do not operate a retail business. So, just wanna thank you guys for that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
11.6 is, is an ordinance introduced by the Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan, amending City Code Chapter 90, Parks and Recreation, Motorized Vehicles.
Heard the second.
Motion, second. Counselor Fennessy?
Just, I'd like to introduce one amendment to that, and I talked to Mary today about it. Under Section 2, where it details the routes, where it says the sidewalk on the west side of 31st Avenue East, from East Second to Grand, should really state the sidewalk on the north side of 31st Avenue. So just a clerical change.
Do you introduce that as an amendment?
Yes.
All in favor of the amended motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? How about the actual motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if that's, okay. Stand adjourned.